Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, to the Pittsburgh Common Council meeting for July 23, 2024. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting at 7:31 PM. Please stand up for the place of allegiance.
I would like to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please, roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Ratafrada.
Here.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhardt.
Here.
Alder Herbst is absent with excuse. Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Vafadari.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a call, and Mayor.
Thank you. So next, we move to item four, public appearances for non-agenda items and new appointments. So tonight, I want to, we have a mayoral appointment. I will appoint Roderick Rick Smith for the Transportation and Transit Commission. His term expired on April 2027 because his charter is a term due to vacancies. So.
So moved.
Yeah, okay. Second, Rick, can you move and introduce yourself to the council?
Thank you. Should I stand or sit down?
You can sit down, yeah.
Thank you. I'm Rick Smith. I have a paragraph or two, if you'd like me to read it, or you can just ask me questions. This is pretty much the same as what I wrote in the questionnaire. So my wife Sue and I have lived in Pittsburgh for more than 30 years. And there's a guy right here. Oh! And we've raised both of our daughters here as well. The city has certainly grown and changed since we first moved here and continues to be a great place to live. Throughout this time, I've worked here in Pittsburgh at Promega and just retired this last year, looking to invest my time in areas that I can make a positive contribution. I've already, for many years, organized a weekly running group and biking group, and I volunteer on the Ice Age Trail and as an income tax preparer for low-income and elderly folks. I know the Transportation and Transit Commission serves an important role in working with the council and coordinating with local governments and securing grant funding where possible. I'm known as a good listener and a good communicator, and I've already spent time familiarizing myself with the previous agendas and packets, the Transportation Commission Charter, the member handbook, and I'm committed to serving the city in this role. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Question? So I want to say thank you, Rick. Any other question? He live in District 2. We are neighbors. I know Rick for 20 years.
Mm-hmm.
He's an avid bicycle, and I know he's do a lot of volunteer job in the community, so this is why now he's retired. I say, what are you doing with your free time?
Yeah. How about this?
So, okay.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of approving Rick Smith for the Transportation and Transit Commission, say aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you. So next, we have, we have an award. It's an Invasive Species Action Award to Susan Easterday. So as you know, Susan is our Chair of the Park Commission, and she's also an avid volunteer. You know, she's always looking to how to improve our parks, trees, and especially, she hate our invasive species. So Anna, can you introduce, and then we're going to take a picture, Sue, and you want to say some words to, you're welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to recognize Sue tonight. She was nominated for an Invasive Species Action Award, previously known as an Invader Crusader Award. Basically, it's an award given by the Wisconsin Invasive Species Council to people who work tirelessly to promote native vegetation and remove invasives. And Sue definitely does that. She's out weeding our parks, and she also recruits other volunteers to help her. She also collects seeds to take up that growing space once the weeds are removed, and she grows plants for us, so we have plants to plant every year when we, when we go through and, and do our work in the parks every spring. So thank you very much, Sue, for all your work. She also is our Chair of Park Commission and has been for several years.
Okay. Oh, you want to say something? Okay, then we give a word of applause for it.
I appreciate the recognition by the Common Council for having received this Wisconsin DNR Award, and also thank you to the council for always allocating public dollars for continued restoration in the natural areas in the Pittsburgh park system. And a special thanks to Pittsburgh Parks Department Forester Naturalist Anna Healy. And over the past seven years, Anna's worked with me to put, to use my interest in native plants and the environment, plants native to Wisconsin, and the wildlife that the plants support. And as you all know, Pittsburgh has lots and lots of park acreage. Some of this acreage is in a really wild state. You might almost say wild and crazy, but, so it always benefits from volunteers and the public dollars, anything that can be done to pull out more of that invasive growth and restore the areas to, not just that the park human visitors enjoy, but the wildlife itself flourishes more the more there is a variety of native plant life. And I think as we go along and locate more areas to clean up, current visitors will notice the difference, the natural areas, and every park visitor will have just one more thing to enjoy in the system. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you to you, Sue, okay? Okay, so we can take a picture?
I don't know, you want to come with? I'm a picture.
Ready?
I will open the public hearing for the council-proposed amendment to the 2025-2034 Capital Improvement Plan, also known as CIP. So I, we have a couple of people that they wanted to speak, applicants? Is there another one? Four? Okay. So I want to mention that we receive a couple of email, myself and also the council, people in support and against one of the amendments, especially the amendment number, what is? Number two? So, and the council, I already shared all those emails with the council. So I will call people to speak about this. As you know, you have three minutes to speak about the issue. So I will call first to, one second, Rita Henricks. She wishes to speak in support of Alder Herbst's amendments. So Rita?
I'm Rita Burke Henricks, a Pittsburgh resident for almost 20 years. I strongly support Alder Herbst's amendments. First, a community center would serve more people. It would serve teens, but it would also serve others for such things as possible food pantry, library service, services, outreach services to the area, a place for families could gather. It certainly should be considered. Second, delaying any construction would allow better planning as to needs, understanding the best way to meet those needs, as well as examining the best site. Rushing in to fulfill a wish rather than ascertaining true needs is fiscally irresponsible. When you have citizens worrying about being able to afford their taxes, pay their ballooning rents, or even purchase food, proposing something like this is not fiscally responsible. If you rush to start construction, what about the area acquired from the town of Madison? Waiting would allow the city to see what else is being considered or exists in this area, such as the Fantastic Trades Building, a possible Y, or Verona High School. Can we afford this now, or are there needs that have to take precedence? Has anyone looked into the true cost of this proposal, including the cost to borrow money as well as to run it? Asking that 50% be covered by private donations makes sense. Look at the many facilities in our area that have received such support, including the playground that the mayor worked so hard to get built. Having people buy in or become involved is important, and having citizens feel that Pittsburgh is for all citizens. It is, might feel good to support the CIP as proposed, but ask yourself, is there a better way to meet Pittsburgh's needs?
Rita? Next, I am calling, oh, Cheryl Strassmann is registered only to, in support of Alder Herbst's amendment. I am calling now Patrick Cheney. He wishes to speak in support of, I don't know, what is?
Good evening. Although I was the only one of the public to come to the whole CIP comment, public hearing, when that was open last month or so, and made some comments on a couple of projects, I see that nothing of what I said generated any amendments for those projects, even though that would have saved some money. I didn't hear anything back on that, so, okay, I will let that go. I will say to the council that I support the two amendments that you will be discussing later in this meeting. And the reasons for that are that I want to, the entire council, including the mayor, when you look at the CIP and later in the year of the budget, there are three major things going on this year that I see that need to be kept in mind related to protecting our property tax bills and what we have to spend on property taxes for this year and for the future. The three things that I see are, there was a huge increase for almost everybody, as far as I know, of property tax assessments this year. That scares the hell out of everybody, although I know the correct relationship between property tax assessments and the budget and the mill rate and the actual property tax bills that come out later. Second thing is that the council, at least, wants to hopefully pass a referendum to increase our property tax levy by an extra $3 million, what's been discussed, to exceed the expenditure restraint limits and to forfeit the state reward for not staying within the expenditure restraint, as I understand it. And the third thing is the new police station, which might be 35 million, 40 million, 50 million, which goes on borrowing, which also is paid for by property taxes. So keep our property tax bills in mind and any CIP or anything in the budget later that goes onto property taxes, because this is a lot of stuff being put on our residents who pay property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. I will call Sue Easterday. Does she wishes to speak in support of the amendments I support?
Hi. 2731 Osmondson Road, resident of Pittsburgh. Sue Easterday. Just, this is regarding the, the discussion of, or the idea of a teen center versus a community center. And so with all due respect to those supporting a standalone teen center, I think the approach is limiting and short-sighted. We all know navigating the teen years is difficult, and providing a place for teens alone is help that can sometimes be considered too little and too late. Strong families can usually weather stormy teen years, and so creating a center that provides family support will help kids become better teens. I think building a new structure isn't necessary. Certainly leasing space to provide support to the community means more than just the expense of a new building that is dedicated to teens alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Next, we have online, Sherif Otun. He wishes to speak on this item. I don't know if support or against. Sherif?
Yes. Hello, good evening. The name is Sherif Otun, 2960 Kimtoms Way, resident of Pittsburgh. I am speaking against the amendment of the Pittsburgh Teen Center for another five years. I am a member of the Board of Review and as well as a member of the Healthy Neighborhood Committee, and I'm a very strong advocate for the teen center because I've got the privilege, I've had the privilege, to be able to engage with the EQT by Design Committee, who actually put together a committee engagement study towards the early phase of this, and that's how I was introduced to the teen center. I see a high value for the teen center, especially in the neighborhood that is of discussion. And based on other conversation that I've had, the only thing that seems to be a limiting factor or in support of the amendment is expense and cost. And if I'm wrong, I hope to be corrected through this meeting and through this conversation as well and through the vote. The Pittsburgh Teen Center has a lot, a lot of contribution to be imposed on the youth, and they are a very critical part of our society and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak? Okay, so I am closing the public hearing. Thank you. So next, we move to, to the consent agenda. I need a motion.
Second.
Mayor, I'd like to remove the June 25 draft minutes.
June 25, okay. Okay, all of the favor of the consent agenda without the June 25 draft minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, what are you doing?
Yeah, for the June 25 minutes, under item nine, unfinished business one, for the resolution 12324, I just wanted to correct, the roll call votes for was Allen Gerhardt, Herbst, and Wheeler. Right now, it says Maldonado. The votes against were correct, and I'd like to move to approve with that change.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the June 25 minutes with the change?
Give me a second.
Oh.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the June 25 minutes with the changes, what is?
Changing Maldonado to Wheeler.
Yeah. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, thank you. So next, we move to Administrator's Report.
Good evening, everyone. Got several items of information for you this evening. First off, upcoming road closure that was provided to us by Dane County Highway, specifically County Highway MM will be closed for a couple of weeks while they do some storm water improvements in their form of replacing some culverts near Hate Farm and Goodland Park Road, as well as Murphy and County Highway B. And then, once those culverts are replaced, they'll be doing some resurfacing of that road, believe from East Clayton Road all the way to Highway 14 intersection. They don't anticipate full road closures while the resurfacing is going on, but certainly will be some inconvenience to traffic at that point in time. You may have noticed, the front counter remodel continues to progress. Just want to let council know, the glass that is going to be installed has been back ordered. We anticipate that coming in early next month and then being installed in mid-August. And also want to let the council know that the mayoral photos are going to be relocated to the wall. As you come in City Hall, you look to the right, the wall straight ahead is where those will be placed. And next item on my list is, I want to let the council know, there will be an open house for the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan. That open house will be July 31, here at City Hall, at 5:30 PM. And for council residents, anyone listening this evening or watching perhaps after the fact on the stream, the Greenfield Neighborhood Plan survey has also been placed on the city's website. You can find the link there in the Planning and Zoning section, and that'll be available for about the next two weeks. Couple of hiring updates. Yesterday was the first day for the Housing and Finance Specialist position that was created in this year's budget. Lorraine Gage was hired and again started yesterday. And then we had a vacancy in the Clerk's Assistant role. We have two of those roles who assist Tracy in the Clerk's Department and also greet our visitors as they come in the front door. Stephanie Martinez was hired there, and she started yesterday as well. In-person absentee voting will begin next week in regards to the August 13 partisan primary. The hours for the in-person absentee voting here at City Hall are 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Tuesday, July 30 through Friday, August 2, and then Monday, August 5 through Thursday, August 8, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And again, these are weekdays only. And then the last day to vote absentee here in person is Friday, August 9, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And that information is available on the city's website as well. Next item, we have a new event that is being launched by the Human Resources Department. That event is a Youth Government Week, which is available to middle and high school students who wish to discover and learn more about the inner workings of local government. That week is going to be August 26 through August 30. And those participating in the program will learn about things like our library services, human resources, elected officials and the mayor, public safety, planning and zoning in public works, as well as the senior center. Again, participants can be in middle school or high school. There is no cost to participate in the program. Transportation is available for those who are interested, and you do not necessarily need to sign up for all five days of the event. You can sign up for individual days. Human Resources will have the registration available in the next couple of days, and we'll be sure to share that information with the Common Council on how you can further share that with your constituents and how they may register. Capacity is limited to approximately 40 students each day, so obviously sign up early and often. And again, thank you to our Human Resources Department for taking the lead on this event. And then the last thing I have is, I just want to thank all of the staff, department heads, elected officials, for your recent participation in the workshops and focus groups related to the strategic plan that is under development. So I know it's been a lot of commitment for folks in and above, over and above their regular meetings here with the city and your role as elected official, as well as your other commitments, both professionally and personally. So thank you for your time. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I had one question. You had mentioned the Murphy Creek Culvert. Do we know what that is being, what the material that that culvert will be made out of is? Is that a concrete or is it corrugated steel?
I don't, but we can check and I can let you know.
Yeah, the reason I ask is when we, back when we were originally working on the comprehensive plan, we had some environmental people. I think there were a couple from Stevens Point, and there were some from other places that actually walked, I walked through the creeks with them. It was kind of, it was really kind of interesting looking at the work they do. But one of the things they said is that flat-bottomed concrete culverts are not the best for environmentally. So if we could make sure we're doing a round culvert in the creek, that would be, that would be great.
Yeah, I can check and let you know.
Any other questions for the city administrator? Nope? Okay, thank you. So next is the mayor report. So I changed the agenda, so from now on, I'm going to have the mayor report after the administrator report. So I want to share a couple of things with you. As you know, I have been meeting with business owners and CEOs of local companies. So on July 12, the city administrator and economic development director, we met with Playcom CEO. This is another great company located in our city. It was founded in 1966 by Tom Moss, and now his son Dan is the CEO. This is a family company. The headquarters is located in Pittsburgh, and they have five more locations in other states. They are the leading designer and manufacturer for stock and custom design thermoforming and injection molding. Playcom strive for forward sustainable recycling of plastic, plastic and in its eco-star facility that we toured, and it was interesting. So on Playcom Motors is simple, better packaging. So this is a great company, you know, that we have here in the city, and it was, it was a very interesting conversation. So the other thing that we did, we visited the Uzona Institute, that this one is a non-for-profit organization, that the meeting was with the head of department. We did a tour on July 9, and then we have our staff meeting there. So this is an impressive medical research facility that collaborates with scientists, clinicians, and leaders worldwide to evaluate the safety and efficacy of psilocybin to treat severe cases of depression and anxiety. So that one, it was a great, also, a tour. It's incredible what they have built there, so if you have the opportunity in the future to tour, please do it. And today, we visit also iHeart Radio Station. So we have a meeting with the regional, I think the regional president from Madison Milwaukee area. So that one was another great opportunity to chat with him about, you know, his plan to stay in Pittsburgh and how we can help them to stay here in the region. So I also attended the soft opening of the Rusty Bee, and it's, you know, it was, I don't know, you have the opportunity to be there. This is a great place for young people, a lot of young people, but it's a great amenity in that part of the city, you know? So if you have the opportunity, please go and take a look. We also, I also, we did a ribbon county for the new fit core equipment at McKiffin Park. And the other scene, we did a groundbreaking for the new hotel, the Spring Hill by Marriott. And this is the second investment by Rabin Shaw. He also owns the State Bridge Hotel. So, and the other thing I want to mention here is, you know, when Rabin and also the architect for this project, you know, they talk very fondly about how our staff, you know, the planning department staff and also economic development staff, they, they were so, you know, involved in the project, following with him, so, and it's, it's good to hear that, you know, that we are that type of community and our staff is, you know, you know, very helpful to our, the project that are coming to the city and investors. So I want to say thank you to Mike Joyce, Leanna, and Zach, because, you know, they, you know, they were very helpful with this project, so. The other thing is, I also created a new partnership. I met with the Wisconsin Women Business Initiative Corporation, also known as WIBIC. So I tried to introduce him with the Pittsburgh Chamber and other, you know, staff here in Pittsburgh, so how we can collaborate. They are, you know, they support women and help women to open their own businesses. So, and they have a couple of clients, or they call clients, or members here in the city of Pittsburgh. I also had the opportunity to met with the interim Dane County Executive, Jamie Kuehl. She came to visit us to Pittsburgh. She wanted to be, she wanted to learn more about Pittsburgh, and also we discuss BRT. The other seat that I did in the last two weeks, I did a ride along. The other seat that I did in the last two weeks, I did a ride along with the fire and police department, and I highly recommend you guys to do that if you have. I know that Nicole did one with the police. I would recommend to do one. And thank you to all of you for attending the special council meeting last Monday. Currently, I am working in 2025 budget with the city administrator and finance director. Today, it was a day for staff to provide the draft for each department budget for next year. Also, we have continued the conversation with Verona and Fitchburg EMS Future. And then also we already started with the unions negotiation for the PD and the fire department. What else? And continue meeting with Chief Morales and the city administrator to this, our monthly meeting regarding the police facility that is moving forward. Next event, so I want to invite you, all of you, to July 31st to the groundbreaking of the North Fish Archery Park, also known like they have, at 3:30. So I hope you can see you there. This is a project that the city has been working for the last four years. They are going to start with construction when? Next week? Okay, Monday? And that's it for now. Any question for me? No? Okay. So next we move to the commission and committee reports. Plan Commission.
The agenda items are down in new business, so I can just do the, the non-agenda items from Plan Commission. So we did, we looked, we approved a conditional use permit for the space at 5264 Anton Drive. It's the one that we had talked about recently, a restaurant slash, you know, event space wanted to come in. They, we had a conditional use approved with some stipulations. They declined to move forward because they didn't, they need, they felt they needed to stay up until 2:00 AM in order to make the business work. So a different company came, it's called Blue Sky. It's an event venue, basically private event venue. They'll do wedding receptions, baby showers, and then maybe some small ticketed events like comedy shows and board game nights, things of that nature. And so we went into a lot of detail because of the size of the, you know, same concerns, parking concerns, the number of people that will be in the area. But after, you know, going through the conversation with Plan Commission, we decided it was a good fit for the neighborhood and that the parking will be sufficient. And we did make it for, the old permit was for one year, but we made it so it was indefinite so they can actually start booking weddings out, you know, two, three years in advance. So that has been approved. And then we also looked at another conditional use. Hang on just one second. A conditional use in the Wingra, that Wingra site off of, off of McKee Road near Capeback Drive. They wanted to continue doing some, some mixing basically of, and it's basically the same operations that they're doing. They're going to do it for a couple more years, but we ended the, the permit in 2027. Oh, I'm sorry, we ended it in 2025, end of 2025, so that if that development moves forward behind there with the apartment buildings, they won't be continuing with that type of work. So they have the option to come back and ask for an extension. And then they are doing, the report from the department shared that they are doing community development coordinator interviews, and I believe that they made an offer. I don't think I've heard the final result of that. And then the South Stoner Neighborhood Plan is moving forward with a preferred option, and it's, it should be more formal options soon for that neighborhood plan. And then as, as the administrator mentioned, we have the open house for the Greenfield Neighborhood on July 31st next week. Thanks.
Thank you. Any question for Gabriela? Nope? Okay. So next we move to Board of Public Works.
I'll move approval of resolution R-13024, acceptance of well number 12, well drilling bid.
Second.
Okay. Did the Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Did the Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay. What is this, Bill?
Tim, would you like to take this, or do you want me to describe that?
I can take it. The 2018 Water System Master Plan recommends the installation of a new high-capacity well in order to maintain adequate water service. The Public Works Department has prepared construction plans and specifications and obtained competitive bids. Project was advertised by legal notice in the Wisconsin State Journal on May 23rd and May 30th, 2024, as well as posted on questcbn.com. On June 13th, 2024, one bid was received publicly with the results listed in the attached bid tab. Midwest Well Services was the low bidder at $889,420. The 2024 Capital Improvement Plan includes funding for this project. So we're looking for approval of the award of the well number 12 well drilling project to Midwest Well Services in the amount of $889,420 plus a 10% contingency of $88,942. And with that, does anyone have any questions?
Any question? Okay, Jay?
Yeah, I have two questions. The first one is, I looked through all of the documents that are in the packet for this, and there's nothing here that says where this well is going to be located.
We don't say it.
It says it's available in the bidding documents, but we weren't provided the bidding documents.
Tim, do you have that in the, did you have that in the bid documents, or did you provide that obviously to the bidder?
Yeah, the, the bid documents were included in the agenda item, and as an exhibit, the construction drawings were included, which had a location map. So that's page 334.
Oh, I don't have that page.
So ultimately, if it's in there, I don't think you have any issue with us sharing that, do you, Tim?
No.
No. So it's, it's at the, near the Savannah Oaks Middle School, the South Stoner Prairie, future South Stoner Prairie Park in that vicinity.
Okay. And the other question I had is, I, and I know there's a reason for this, and I don't remember what it is, but this, the, this specifically said that prevailing wage is not required for this project. What is the reason that we don't require prevailing wage on a product, a project like this?
Typically with prevailing wages, it's required on federal projects, if using federal money. So they'll have a requirement for utilizing Davis Bacon and following the wage prevailing weights. The city doesn't have any requirement for that. Therefore, it wasn't used. Most of our contractors meet that requirement anyways.
Any other question? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-13024, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, sorry. The motion carries. Okay. So next we move to Park Commissions. The AP is not here, so skip. Library Board.
Nothing to report.
Commission on Aging Well.
Yes, I just have a few things to highlight from Aging Well. First, the decision was made to delay applying for the 5310 grant funds until 2025. And the grant would fund 80% of the purchase of a vehicle for use for the senior center and 50% of operating expenses. And then for the, the department is increasing outreach with staff attending community events and going to Munch Mobile Meal stops at various parks throughout the city. The multicultural work group is developing an ambassador program where the program will use volunteers as representatives at outreach effort, or for outreach efforts. And then Fitchburg's Senior Center Friends is holding a Brat Lunch on Friday, August 16th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and everyone is welcome. And then also coming up on August 7th, the various Alders will be featured at the senior center to learn more, so the folks at the senior center can learn more about their Alders, and I think that'll be the first of two of those events. I forget the date off the top of my head for the second one, but the first one will be August 7th.
Okay. Thank you. Resource Conservation Commission.
We met on July 8th. We discussed a plastic recycling program brought to us by Sean Path, representing the Lions Club. So there should be a couple of receptacles that are, are placed in the city where you can put your plastic bags, similar to what you could at, at a, you know, when returning to a grocery store. And if we accumulate, if we accumulate 1,000 pounds of plastic, we will be rewarded with a park bench made of recycled plastic bags. We reviewed the, the RFP response from Pelletary for solid waste collection and discussed, you know, minor variations, how many brush collections and that sort of thing we're going to have per year, as well as shredding events. And discussed a bit of the RCC's 2025 budget, which would include those shredding events, staffing of an organic waste drop-off potentially at the farmer's market, composting program, community outreach, and, you know, whatever else RCC, RCC has in mind for the year.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Transportation and Transit Commission.
We did not have a July meeting.
Okay. Xida?
We are meeting on Thursday.
Okay. Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee.
We met on the 16th. I unfortunately was unable to attend, but reading through the notes, there were a few items, including the Burn Road Solar Update. And I just want to give kudos to the conversations around the farmland preservation zoning ordinance. There's been a lot of really thoughtful conversation, and Deanna's been a great partner in kind of being open to the feedback of the group and having those conversations. I'm not sure when the next meeting is, but looking forward to that progress.
Okay, thank you. Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
Our next meeting is August 6th.
Thank you. EMS Commission.
Yeah, Verona had their first council meeting on the future of Fitchrona last night. I would encourage people to look at it. It was basically just starting off with a bunch of questions of, you know, what's going to happen in the future? What's the, what are the issues and everything else like that? So it's still in the initial phases, so, but I would encourage people to look at that meeting.
Okay. I think we are going to have a discussion with our council at the end of August, isn't it? Yeah, okay. So we're going to have a discussion. Okay. Healthy Neighborhood Committee.
We, our July meeting was canceled. I don't know if we're having one in August or not.
Okay. Maybe you need to follow up with Deanna. Housing Advisory Committee.
We meet next on August 12th.
Thank you. Landmark Preservation Commission.
We have not had a meeting.
Tree Advisory Committee.
We had a meeting on July 18th where our forester Anna gave us an update on our EAB, which is Emerald Ash Bore Management Plan, which is a good but rather depressing topic. But I'm really happy to report, I think the city is doing all it can to try and help prolong the life of the trees that are affected. And then she reviewed the DNR grant that she's working on, which a lot of great work has gone into.
Yep. Thank you. Report from other commission and committees, so Community Equity Ad Hoc Committee, linear updates.
We met, met recently, and for that committee, really just still in the beginning phases of trying to decide the direction and some of the goals and outcomes that the committee will go after, and then just also getting a better understanding of the strengths of everyone on the committee to make sure they're put in position to be as useful as they can for a lot of learning and developing to emerge from that committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next we move to Standing Committees and Report. We are going to start with Finance Committee, and so the first resolution.
Yes. I move approval of resolution R-12724, approving a developer agreement between the city of Fitchburg and Sub-Zero Group Incorporated.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay. What is this?
Yeah, so this is a TIF request. There's that new part of the, of the TID in this area. Sub-Zero has had a facility here that's expanded over the years, but they are bringing a new corporate facility. They're basically relocating their global headquarters here in Fitchburg, bringing in 25 corporate jobs. And the total investment that they're making is around 20 million. The value, the valuation estimate for the new property is going to be over 6 million. The TIF request is, has two pieces. It's, the first is extraordinary site costs because the site used to be a former quarry, and there are some complications with building on that and a little bit TBD. The Public Works provided some estimates of what those could be, but they think it could be up to $400,000 worth of, of cost total to do that mitigation, that mitigation. And then the second cost would be the closure of Basswood Drive. There's been a lot of, there were public roads that ran through there, and now it's kind of a private property, so we're trying to, the goal is to kind of create a cul-de-sac to make it clear that that's private property and not public property. And so the, the cost associated with that closure, which includes land acquisition. And so the total cost of that could be up to 451,000, but the request is less than the sum of those two pieces. The total request would max out at $565,000. If it comes up to less than that, then it will be less than that. It's a payback period of 13 years. And just for context, this is the way we work with developer incentives for TIDs. It did pass the BUT4 test that Ellers did an analysis on, and then we do pay as you go development incentives, so we do not pay upfront. What happens is the developer pays all the costs upfront, and including that Basswood Drive project, they will bid and manage the project for us. And then, then as the tax increment comes into the district over time, they can submit for a payment of that, of that incentive over time. So we, it only pays out if the tax increment is generated over those years. So it protects the city from, from being out an amount of money for tax incentive that's not created.
Okay, thank you. I have Tony Fox from Sub-Zero. He wishes to speak in support or answer questions. Oh, no, Tony, do you want to speak? No, fine. Okay, Mike, do you want to add anything? Mike?
Mike Zimmerman, Economic Development Director. I'll be very short, but I just wanted to, first of all, we're excited that this is the first project in our tax increment district number 18. And I just want to again commend our private sector partner, Sub-Zero Group. They've been investing in their campus here for the last 25 years, and this is an exciting time for Fitchburg because they are moving their executive and corporate offices to Fitchburg, and they have branded this as their global campus. So we really appreciate their continued investment, not only with real estate, but also with the, they are our largest employer in the city of Fitchburg as well, and just a great corporate citizen and also a great community partner for us. So thank you to them for their investment, and we would appreciate your support for this TIF request.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions, comments? Jay?
Yeah, the documentation said that there's 25 positions that will be relocated here. Where are they being relocated from?
That would be from their Hammersley Road office building there at Verona Road.
Any other question, comment? No? Okay, I think it's the, you know, we have been working with Sub-Zero in the past with TIF, and I think they are a great partner with the city, and, you know, I think this is great, so thank you for continuing investing in Fitchburg. Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-12724, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, can I add something to my report before we move on?
Yeah, okay.
Finance Director, we also went over, if you recall, recently we, we created a write-off policy. We had no policy for how to write off expenses that were not collectible. And so we did that recently, and so Finance Department, Kari, I believe, mostly went through and actually figured out all of the expenses going back to 1993 that had not been written off. And so there's like 200 pages of, 200 plus pages of documentation of every single itty-bitty account. Basically, so we were writing all that off in one fell swoop, but two was documentation associated with that. Just for reference, everything below 5,000 is a staff approval. Anything from 5 to 25,000 is a mayor. Anything from 5 to 25,000 is a mayor approval. I believe there were a couple of things that the mayor had to take a look at. And then anything 25,000 or above would come to a council for approval for a write-off, but nothing met that criteria. But it is an extraordinary amount. And that's, reflects the fact that we haven't done it for over 30 years. But yeah, so it's a good policy. And we'll be doing, cleaning that up on a rolling basis going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. So next, we move to Personnel Committee. Any new?
No, we're actually meeting tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow, okay, thank you. Public Safety and Human Services.
We have nothing else to report.
Okay, so next we move to New Businesses. And this is our Direct Referral. And we are going to start with Boards of Public Work.
I will move approval of Resolution R 13824, approving the First Amendment to the Agreement for Subdivision Improvements in the Inspiration at Swan Creek CSM.
Second.
Okay, did the Board of Public Works approve?
Yes.
Okay, what is this, Bill? Or you need Tim?
Well, if Tim is available, I'm sure he would love to speak about this.
Yeah, so the Inspiration at Swan Creek CSM was originally planned to be a senior living development. It is now planned to be 60 residential homes to address the public improvements needed for this change in land use. The Agreement for Subdivision Improvements in the Inspiration at Swan Creek needs to be amended. Some of the specific changes are, is a requirement for the minimum basement elevations to ensure proper sewer gravity flow, street improvement requirements due to lateral installations, a bio-retention installation schedule update, requirements to meet our current standard specifications for engineering and construction, and then some grading requirements, along with some land conveyance requirements, building in occupancy permit requirements, and a park fee update.
Thank you. We have a question.
Yeah, I have two questions on this one, Tim. The, the basement elevation issue, is this going to drive the height of some of these buildings? I don't, I don't remember seeing that particular kind of requirement in one of these developer agreements before. So are we, are we concerned that some of the basements may go too low so they can't gravity sewer?
Correct, yeah. So we, we just wanted to ensure that we, we get the proper sewer flow so that, you know, the solids don't separate from the, the liquid and clog our, the sewer laterals where it'd be a maintenance nightmare. So we, we just wanted to ensure the proper elevations for those basements.
Yeah, but the question I'm asking is, is that going to increase the height, you know, increase the elevation of the basement walls perhaps? So they end up with a lot of stairs going up into these units?
It, it's a minimal increase, not a drastic increase.
Okay. The other question I had, and I, I saw the thing in there about, you know, if you tear up the road, you have to fix it. Are we expecting a lot of road disruption as a result of the construction? Where the, the laterals aren't stubbed on the property, I take it? They're stubbed in the road?
Correct. And I, I believe the roads proposed to be resurfaced due to those tie-ins for the, the laterals, since there are multiple cuts needed for that. So sassafras drive, I believe is going to, is proposed to be milled and overlaid at, at the completion of the project.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor of Resolution R-138-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 14224, approving certified survey map request CS 255424 by Wade Wise, agent for Tim O'Brien, to approve a certified survey map to allow the subdivision of one parcel into three buildable lots on property associated with 2747 South Seminole Highway.
Second.
The Plan Commission did approve.
Thank you. What is this?
This one and the next ordinance for the rezone are related. This is a property right off of Seminole Highway near the intersection of Seminole and Lacy, right by Hop House. There's going to be three lots. Lot three is going to be an outlot for now, but the potential future has apartments. And we may be looking at a comp plan amendment later this year for that. But that's, that's just an outlet for now. Lot two is a mixed use. It includes a 5,000 square foot commercial with 36 apartment units above it. And then Lot one, one is an indoor pickleball facility. The plan would be to build summer 2025 and open fall 2026. It is, it would plan to be a 12-court facility with lounge, food, some retail. And they'd plan to have leagues, events, tournaments. Really interesting facility for, for the city of Fitchburg. We talked, talked a little bit to the applicants at Plan Commission. They are from Oregon and they like Fitchburg as a location because it can draw from all the neighboring communities. And they planned that old barn on the, on the property, which may, some, some of you may be familiar with. They planned to take that down, salvage as much of the material as they can and use it in the project. They did this for the Black Hawk Church just on the street. The, one of them, they, the, one of the developers here did that facility. And they used that stone that they reclaimed from that area. So really a cool, a cool thing. And they also have a relationship with Hop House. So they're excited about that in terms of the overlap. And then also because the school's down the street, they think they can do some school programming as well. So it's a really interesting project. And this is step one with the certified survey map.
Okay, any questions? Nicole?
I more just wanted to make a comment. Recently, I've heard feedback from some of the neighbors in the Stoner Prairie neighborhood, some younger families who have moved into Fitchburg, like wanting more things around them to do. And I know a group of dads, my husband included, who plays pickleball every Sunday morning. And they've started to run out of space at the Seminole Pool. And so I think this is just a really exciting, like, it might seem dorky to those who aren't into pickleball. But I think it's a really exciting thing for younger families who are living there. And I really appreciate the thought of other programming, like pulling the school in. So I just wanted to share that this was super exciting and put a smile on my face to read.
Thank you. Jay?
Yeah, this zoning application was a little confusing. So we're saying that what's labeled on the map as Lot 3 is going to be an outlot?
We have Deanna here, so maybe she can answer the question for you, Jay.
Yes, Jay. Just before Plan Commission, the applicants requested that Lot 3 be renamed or re-identified as an outlot for future development at this time. And that is mainly because their plans are to do high-density residential. And that would require a minor comp plan amendment. And of course, that's quite a lengthy process. So they'd like to just leave the Lot 3 as an outlot at this time.
Right, so can we change the labeling on the maps to show that? Because right now it says Lot 3. And that.
Yes, we, we certainly will.
The confusing part about that is I presume that lot is not part of the rezoning. It's only the lots one and lots two that are being rezoned to BH.
This is correct.
So the lot, the, the outlot would then remain in RR zoning? All right. And then I wonder, they, they had had, they had said there was some question about whether they were going to remove that house or not? The farmhouse that's there?
At this time.
Yeah, when they do the other development.
Yeah. Are they going to be renting it out or is it just going to be vacant? We don't know.
To my understanding, there's still a, an O'Brien family member living there.
Yeah, okay, all right. And so the, the, the building that's being, that was another thing that was confusing because they have proposed building and future building. So the proposed building, is that the pickleball facility? Or is that the apartment building?
Pickleball facility, I believe.
Proposed building is the pickleball.
Okay, so the future building is the mixed-use building that there'll be more things about that, I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah, that will come back.
All right. Groovy.
Okay, any other question, comment? Okay.
Yeah, I guess apropos to one of the proposed CIP amendments, it says in here that the developer is going to install a 10-foot shared-use path. What is the extent of that? And how does that play into the, the CIP project?
I guess I could give a stab on that one.
Okay.
So the, the multi-use path would extend along the current prop, the property under discussion here, all the way down to Lacy for the multi-use path. But there is a section of multi-use path that was never installed along Seminole at the Hop House. So it's my understanding that the CIP amendment would be that last remainder of piece at Hop House.
Okay, so it makes sense. Okay, any other question? All those in favor of Resolution R-142-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, thank you. Next.
I'll move approval of Ordinance 2024-021, zoning ordinance amendment approving rezon request RZ 255524 by Wade Wise, agent for Tim O'Brien, to rezon property from RR, Rural Residential, to BG, General Business, to allow for an athletic facility, specifically a pickleball court on property associated with 2747 South Seminole Highway.
Second.
Plan Commission approved.
Okay.
And this is the rezone associated with what we just discussed for that pickleball facility.
Any additional question about this? No? All those in favor of Ordinance 2024-0-21, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Gabriela. And you have another one?
One more. I'll move approval of Resolution R 14324, approving final plat request FP 255824 by John Thompson and Jane Bartel, agent for Thompson Engineering LLC, to create a final plat to create 13 parcels, including 11 buildable lots on property located off Oak Meadow Drive.
We need a second.
Second.
Okay. Maldonado?
So this is that Oak Meadow property that we've discussed multiple times. It's the, sorry, it's the 11 lots, lowered, lower density lots off of, it's like the street that's parallel to Fish Etterie near the I Heart Media property. There's just slight changes. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find my notes on this. There was just slight changes to the easements and.
Do you want Deanna to explain?
Yeah, I don't know, I can't find my notes.
Deanna, can you explain the changes?
Yeah, from the preliminary plat, there's just been a few further refinements of the easements. Pretty standard as the utility plans are finalized, sometimes the easements need to change slightly. But the size and the shapes of the lots are what was shown when it came for preliminary plat.
Thank you. And also the applicant is here, Chris Townsend, to, from JSD, to answer some questions we have. So, okay. Any question, comment? This is the final plat. Nicole?
I have a rather random question, but it just caught my eye. In the application, it talked about USPS not being responsive to whether or not they would facilitate deliveries there?
Yeah, so they, they want there to be like door-to-door delivery and like a mailbox on each lot. But there, it's also possible that USPS could require them to just have one, one place where all the mails delivered for all the lots. So they haven't had a final decision. So they have to basically set aside potential place for that USPS facility to go if necessary.
Thank you.
Any other comments, question? Okay.
Roll call requested.
Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
No.
Alder Dancler Jr.
Yes.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbst is absent. Alder Jettser.
Nay.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so next.
One more.
One more, yes.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 14424, approving the collateral assignment of agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of Fourth Edition to Terre Vesta.
Second.
Okay, did the Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
Yeah, if, if the administrator can cover this.
Okay.
So these are, this is a request similar to previous ones, not only for this development, but other developments. But in this particular case, the Terre Vesta developer, also known as Fitchburg Lands LLC, is intending to finance the next development phase, the Fourth Edition to the plat of Terre Vesta through one community bank. As a condition of their financing, one community bank is requiring the developer to consent to the collateral assignment of the agreement for subdivision improvements in the plat of the Fourth Edition, and the city to consent to such assignment. This requires the city to give notice to the bank of any developer breach or default of the developer's obligations under the subdivision improvement agreement, and permits the bank to cure the breach or default or, and finish the project, make payments on behalf of the developer, or sell the project to another developer in the event, event that the developer defaults. We did this, a similar assignment with the third phase. And as I mentioned, we've done this in the past for other development projects. So this is a rather common occurrence.
Okay, any question, comment? You have none?
Just for the record, Chad, have we ever had to exercise one of these?
Not that I'm aware of, but, you know, I've been in this role about three years. So I haven't seen it happen in three years. I don't, Mike, I don't want to put you on the spot. Yeah, Mike's thinking, no.
Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-144-24, say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So next we move to unfinished business. And it's a finance, Gabriela, is a resolution for the CIP.
Yeah, I'll move approval of Resolution R 12124, capital, Council Proposed 2025 to 2034, capital.
That's not it, no, it's.
No. What is it called?
It's adopting the 2025 to 2034 Capital Improvement Plan.
Yes, I'm reading from the, from the.
And I'll second your motion that I just read.
Okay.
Okay, so I don't know, Misty, do you want to, to share some additional information before we, we move forward? I know that there is one of the amendment was withdrawn, and I don't know.
Yeah, I can share some additional info.
Okay.
So the packet of the Council Proposed Amendments, there were only two of them submitted by the deadline using the form that was provided. The packet is available out on the city's website. In the agenda packet tonight, there's also a link to it if you don't want to go through the Finance page. So for tonight, we will go through each one of those two amendments. Council is able to make whatever amendments the amendment you may be interested in. But only these two CIP projects could actually be changed as opposed to what was in the mayor's proposed CIP. Julia mentioned, the, Alder did indicate that he wanted to withdraw the First Amendment, but really only he can withdraw it. So I would suspect that we could keep the conversation relatively short and vote one way or the other on it. But I don't know that we can withdraw it on his behalf.
Okay. I didn't know that. Okay. Okay, so, since he's not here, I'm going to introduce the amendments, okay? Is everyone is okay?
Do we need a motion on them?
Yeah, we need a motions, and you can't make motions.
What? Yeah, I'm gonna, oh, okay.
But I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll move to approve amendment number one, CIP 3495, the Lacy Seminole and Seminole Path North, to remove the Seminole Path project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions?
So this is, this is the one that Alder Herbst is asking to remove, correct? Did he provide any reasoning why?
My guess would be, you know, per Deanna's clarification, you know, the development that's going in is going to have the multi-use path from Lacy Road up through their northern boundary, and that would leave a gap of just, you know, 150 feet or whatever it is, from their northern boundary up along the side of the Hop House property.
You'll have the developer pay for it instead of the city.
But...
Well, so I'll just read, I'll just read Alder Herbst's email. He sent an email on Tuesday, July 16th, at approximately 10:20 a.m. to the Finance Director, Misty Dash, as well as Ross Kaler, one of our city engineers. Dear Misty and Ross, I apologize for making this work for you, but I would like to withdraw my amendment to remove the new portion, multi-use path from Seminole Highway. I don't believe it is needed, but the other Alders will not support this amendment. Best wishes, Dave Herbst.
Okay, so we're going to make sure this, all those in favor of this amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Oh, sorry, language.
So, so I think everyone's saying, oh, we can do a roll call.
Everybody said no.
Well, we qualify, okay. Okay, so...
I apologize, I was finding my charger, so, yes, nay.
Okay, so, the motion, fail. Yeah. The amendment fails. Okay, so Jay, the next one.
Yep, I will try to find the right thing here. I will move approval of amendment two for the CIP, project 6275 Northwest Teen Center, to change the community center, delay construction for five years, lease space instead, and require 50% private donations to build.
Do we have a second? Okay, we don't have a second, so the motion fails.
It would fail to come to the floor.
Okay.
As a result of not coming to the floor?
Exactly.
Darn.
Okay. Okay, so now we will need to vote on the main motion after the amendments are completed, amendments are completed, so we have in front of us the resolution R-121-24, and I will ask roll call for this one.
Before we do that, I just, I wanted to make a comment about this teen center, just for the people who are watching.
Okay.
I have been trying to push for a project like this for over 20 years. So it's not like this just came out of nowhere and it's just being thrown up in a rush. This is something that's been out there as something that the city ought to do. And I feel that delaying it is just going to increase the cost. It's, you know, construction costs have been zooming up more and more and more. And I, I mean, I don't think leasing a building is off the table. I think that's one of the things that's going to be explored. But, you know, having money available in the capital improvement plan to build a building is certainly worth it. I also, I also have just a philosophical issue, asking people to come up with private donations to build this kind of building. It is true that when we built the library, there were some private donations involved, but it wasn't 50%. The city borrowed most of that money. And I think these are, these are infrastructure projects. We don't ask residents to pay money to build roads, although we usually make developers do it, so, you know, that's a different issue. We, we certainly, when we've added, when we added to the senior center, we didn't ask for 50% of the donations for that. I can't, when we've, when we've, when we built the Public Works Maintenance Facility, we didn't ask for 50% public donations to do that. So I just think expecting people to come up with that money, when we're talking about infrastructure projects, doesn't make a lot of sense. Now, having said that, I would love it if one of our, if one of our responsible business partners or partners, or maybe a couple of them, would, would make some large donations to help get this project built. But it is something that I believe is really necessary for the city and has been necessary now for decades.
Thank you, Jay. Alder Maldonado?
Sure. And I won't say a ton, because I know we've discussed a lot of these issues over the years, and obviously it has been approved by every council since 2020. But I will say, just to some of the comments that were made publicly, I want to clear up some of the misconceptions. First, I think one of the speakers mentioned that we need to study this more, and that's exactly what we're doing right now. We're leading a feasibility study. And, you know, that, that's the opposite of rushing in. I also, you know, encourage folks to continue to engage with the consultant, with Equity by Design, because right now they're in the process of determining how much a space should cost, where it should be, what the funding sources should be, what the uses of the space should be, and without kind of revealing some of their findings. One of the questions on the table is if young people are going to use this space in the afternoon and evenings, that there could be potential other uses for it during the day. So I, I just want to caution folks before, you know, kind of rushing to it jump other, like create other solutions, right, like renting a space. Realize that what council wanted at the time is to slow down the process and to ensure that we're doing it right. So leasing a building without a plan is, you know, a potential recipe for disaster. And, and I would just, again, urge folks in the public to allow this process to play out and learn from what is, are the results of the feasibility study, because a lot of people have been engaged, not just young people, but also city staff, community members, youth workers, community center directors, school administrators. A lot of effort has gone into this project, and, you know, I think the amendment reads as very insincere and poorly timed, you know, by trying to come up with some sort of a solution when we're already moving through the process.
Yeah, I have Nicole, and then Jim Wheeler.
Thanks. I also wanted to take a moment just to clear up some things that were stated, I think, in an article posted by one of the Alders. There was a notion that the Verona High School, the new Verona High School here in Fitchburg, would provide a space for teens. I'm very familiar with the project. I actually was the final signature in purchasing the land as the school board clerk. That is in 20 years. That is not now. My own children won't even take advantage of that school. So that's not really a realistic solution. Also, we are a city with three school districts, so what about our students from Oregon? What about our students from Madison? It leaves out two-thirds of our city. I echo what Joe is saying, but I just also want to state my disappointment in sharing information that is not shared by other municipalities, or sharing information that is not public. I think that is so unprofessional and inappropriate. It jeopardizes the business potential of our city. It puts staff in a super awkward position of having to tell people that, you know, people can't keep things in confidence. So I really hope that my fellow Alders will continue, and I know most of us do, to take our responsibility of keeping things in confidence in confidence, and to not share things that are not ours to share. But I wanted to clear that up, that the idea that a Verona High School could fill this need is entirely incorrect and misguided, just so that the community isn't confused on that.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, and I just have a question about the whole name thing, about family center, teen center, community center, or whatever. Joe, I look on, you sent that link out for the video, and it has family reading. And then on the website, it has the dedicated space for teens and parents or guardians. Could you kind of explain or give some background on, you know, what's the thought process behind that?
I'm sorry, Alder, can you clarify a question? I wasn't completely following it.
Yeah, on the, on your video that you sent out the link, I saw something that had a category of family reading. And then on the website, when it talks about the Northwest Teen Center, it talks about a dedicated space for teens and parents or guardians. So, you know, with people saying that should be a family center, I mean, is that like part of what would be like family programming?
I, I mean, I think, I think right now what the, my, I mean, just, again, my, I don't want to prematurely share, like, information that the consultants are gathering, but one of the things that they're doing is they're interviewing stakeholders to figure out what people want. Youth are a part of that equation, but also folks have weighed in with various opinions on what the space should be. So I think that probably just speaks to, you know, some of the themes that have emerged from those interviews versus, you know, a concrete plan being laid out. And, and again, that's kind of why I caution folks to, like, let the actual study play out before we jump to conclusions about what this space should be. And, and I know city staff, Alders, different folks have spoken with the consultants, you know, about what their opinions, what their vision is. So I, I just want to make sure that, you know, again, before we're saying exactly what this space is going to be, that we allow that process to play out.
Thanks.
Thank you. Donald, do you want to say something? No?
No.
Okay. Anyone else? So my other comment about this is, if you're planning to write an article to a newspaper or wherever, please try to have the correct information, you know, because you have created, this article has created a lot of misinformation and incorrect information. So please, next time that you are willing, you can do that, but use the correct information. Okay? That's it. Okay, so next, we move to the, to the main motion. Gabriela?
Yeah, it's on the table.
Okay, so we need to roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Dantzler Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhert.
Aye.
Alder Herbst is absent. Alder Jetser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we approve the CIP. Great job. Thank you, everyone. Okay? So next, we move to Alder District's report. We are going to start with District 2.
Well, Richardson Street has been resurfaced. Yes, and there were many sections along there of curb that were replaced, and I'm told that within the next couple of weeks, the area of, of grass that was, you know, kind of torn up right behind those is going to be restored, so the neighbors will be happy about that. And the only other thing I was going to say is I participated in the Boys and Girls Club fundraiser ride over on Saturday. You can see my fancy new shirt here. So I did the 50-mile bike ride.
Yeah, it was great. I went to, I didn't do anything. I went there to the parks, but it was a great event. So, okay. Gabriela?
Yeah, I mean, it's already been, two things are already said, but we have the new equipment in McKee Farms Park, the Ninja equipment, which is pretty cool. And then the North Fish Ettry Road groundbreaking next week is a huge deal, July 31st. This has been a project that existed before my time on the council, but we've talked about it since I started in 2020, and the fact that we're finally getting to a groundbreaking is too longcoming, but also really, really great that it's finally here. So for the people that have supported that project along the way, which is people on this council, but also many, many community members that have come out in support of it, I hope some people are able to join for that first celebration.
Can you mention how we are funding this? Because some people, you know...
Yeah, yeah, the, the park is funded entirely by park improvement fees, which is developer money that's given to create amenities in the park. So, yeah, so not paid entirely by, by others, and really good use of that money.
Thank you, Gabriela. Then District 3.
Yeah, actually, Gabriela, I wanted to ask you a question about that, or maybe the mayor. Since we are moving away from the name Hub, do we have a process for developing a new, shorter name than North Fish Ettry Park?
We are working on that.
Okay. And the city does have a policy related to naming of park facilities?
And it has to go to Parks Commission for approval.
Okay.
Yeah, so we are working on that. So if you have, and you have idea for the name, please send it my way.
Yeah, I wonder if we've, can we do some, I, I know this is a time-consuming process, but can we do some outreach to the neighborhood, maybe, to ask their thoughts? I don't know. I mean, maybe, it may just not be practical to do it at this juncture, but...
Yeah, we have a year to, for...
Okay, yeah, we can probably do that.
Yeah.
All right, so District 3.
Oh, sorry. I don't know if it's okay to, like, share this or not, Mayor, but I know you and I met with a resident who brought a member of the Ho'ou'au'au' nation just to have a conversation about honoring the indigenous people of this land. So that is one thing that's kind of in the realm of possibility. And I necessarily, not necessarily having to be the name of the space, but having some sort of way to honor that, that legacy of the original inhabitants of, you know, of, of this land.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Thank you, Joe. I forgot about that. So Jay?
All right, we have a couple of fun things. One is the Rusty Bee is open now. So if you haven't had a chance to go there, please stop in. It's a, it's a... I've been there several times since they opened, not since it's only been open two weeks, you know. But it's a, it's a, it's a, it's going to be a good amenity for the city and for my neighborhood especially. With all the rain, I've been kind of driving around, looking at things, and I haven't seen a lot of flooding issues in my district, but I'm sure that some of the other districts where there have been stormwater issues have had some issues. So I don't know, I mean, what's been, what's been going on in your district, Gabriela, with the flooding issues there?
I, I drove up to District, I want to say, because I did that because there were some areas where we have some concern in the past, and they are, because we make some, you know, some work, like last year, everything worked. I didn't see anything, yeah.
Yay.
But I want to say that the ponds at the McKee Farms Park are, they have plenty of water. This is what I noticed. They are like, they're working.
Yeah, I think we've made a lot of progress over the last few years on stormwater projects. I, I have not heard anything directly from District 2.
Good.
Maybe Tim wants to say something about the, the stormwater project in northern reaches of the city, Greenway Cross area, that's recently been completed? And that we've...
Yeah, that the, Greenway Cross is now complete, and with this past rain, didn't receive any issues or complaints with that area up there.
I know that there was an issue again with Fitch Verona Road underneath Verona Road, which is obviously an ongoing problem, which we hope to address through a couple of projects related to the reconstruction of the road, and then also the solution that we're working on with other entities regarding Goose Lake.
Yeah.
But otherwise, Tim, unless you have any information, I think, generally speaking, the city's stormwater infrastructure has held up nicely, considering the significant rainfall events we've had. I know there is temporary issues as it associates, you know, when you're getting an inch or more, you know, within an hour, there's, there's bound to be some challenges. But otherwise, it seems that once the rain starts to subside, that our facilities have been able to adequately manage the rain that has come down. But again, as the mayor mentioned, there are several areas that are full, without a doubt.
Okay, Donald, do you have anything for your district?
No, just to add the ribbon, the ribbon cutting for the Irish Rings, Irish Fields Apartments happened as well, too, more recently, right near the Noble Drive area.
Yes. 4, Jim?
Yeah, South Sine Road and Irish Lane was another one of those areas that had some issues. So we got an email on that. I'm glad to see that the city's working on that. We got an update about the trailer... We got an update about the Trailer Park.
Oh, yeah.
You know, which is in horrible shape. The city is doing the best they can to try to rectify the problem, but it may just take some time, and with all the bureaucracy, as far as, you know, do you foreclose, where do the people go? If you do, now there's buildings on there that probably need to be, some more buildings that need to be raised, so the city is, I think, doing a good job in keeping an eye on that project. I, I just think, just dealing with that issue is out of state landlord, and I don't think the person has an agent that's available in state, and, you know, I'll be talking, again, with the mayor in chat, to see if we could do something similar, that, you know, you have a property in the city of Fitchburg, and somebody needs to be on-site or whatever in 24 hours, you know, I mean, that only just makes sense, because I, I think it just gets to be ridiculous when this owner can basically be in Wyoming, and the condition of this trailer park, and, and basically, I think this, there's no incentive for him to really move along, so I think we just need to do a little bit more, more work, maybe ordinance, that we can rectify this problem, that's it.
Thank you. Go on.
I just wanted to echo Alder Wheeler's comments on how impressed I am with all the things the city is doing, and trying to use all the municipalities that we have relationships with to try and help move that along, and I hope that we can use our Dane County rep to really push for our well-being there and the well-being, well-being of our constituents. Just a couple things, Osmondson Road is ongoing with resurfacing, providing unlimited entertainment to my three and six-year-olds, who have now asked all the construction workers for their autographs, which is, they've all been incredibly nice, so kudos to that very professional and very kind staff. Also, the, wanted to thank all the firefighters, who I think on July 4th just go from like parade to parade to parade, so it was really great, and seeing all the kids super excited about the fire truck is fantastic, and Mayor, as you mentioned, I did a police ride-along, and I highly encourage all of my colleagues to do it, it was incredibly beneficial, I am, I was just really proud of a lot of the interactions I saw that day, and really astonished by the community issues that are, are facing our very diverse population, and the challenges that these men and women face every day in serving our constituents, and trying to foster love and support and community, while also being in some really tricky situations, so Officer Gonzalez was a great officer to ride along with, I think he laughed at my jokes out of pity, so I really appreciate him, but just wanted to thank the police officers for taking the time to do that.
Next, Joe, District One.
Sure. So there is a one-on, or a three-on-three basketball tournament, it's going to be this Saturday, July 27th, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. in Allied Park in Madison, right across the border in Fitchburg. They need volunteers, so if you are interested in volunteering, you can email Katie, K-A-T-Y, Farrens, F-A-R-R-E-N-S, at hotmail.com. She's been doing this tournament for years, and it's always a really good turnout. Also, there have been, you know, several events, there was a Parks Alive event on July 22nd, there was also one on July 8th, and there was a dinner last week from the Allied Dunsmarsh Neighborhood Association, so just always an appreciation of the work that they do in kind of keeping, events keeping cohesion in the community, so that's my report.
Thank you. So next we move to announcement, and we have an announcement to make that we forgot. Okay.
You want to go with the Committee of the Whole?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Committee of the Whole.
Okay.
Committee of the Whole is tomorrow night, starting at 7:00 p.m., which is always confusing because it's not 7:30, the council, it's 7:00 p.m., like Cal, and our first item on the agenda is Olivia Perry from Dane County is going to do a presentation about housing in the area. I did send an email out a couple weeks ago and just resend it out, if you have a chance to look over the Dane County Regional Housing Strategy Action Plan Executive Summary, and maybe the Fitchburg Housing Plan a little bit for tomorrow, I think that would be helpful context, really looking forward to what she has to share, and then also, there will be a presentation on municipal budgeting, budget priorities, and the referendum after the conversation with Olivia. See you tomorrow.
Thank you, Alder Gerhardt. I will add in regards to the Committee of the Whole tomorrow evening in, in the section where referendum conversation and discussion will occur. Just as a heads up, we'll be presenting to the council question language that could be potentially utilized for a referendum question, since it appears as though the council is trending in the direction to approve a resolution with that, so we've been working with our financial management firm, Ellers, on the development of that question, as well as the Department of Administration, so we will have that available, that'll outline the, the items in which the council would like to potentially request funding for, and then there will be a couple of other items that we'll talk about that have developed in the last month or so in relation to other considerations that the council may want to make as it ultimately determines the amount of money that would be asked for or requested from voters, as well as what that would be for, that would largely be due to operational expenses that we're seeing some shortfalls in. So we'll talk more about that this eve, or tomorrow evening, but ultimately, I think the end goal that we're hoping to obtain through tomorrow night's conversation is, what's the dollar amount? What do you want in the dollar, within that dollar amount? And that will help us refine that question language that will also be presented, and then we can talk about next steps after the meeting tomorrow night, which ultimately would lead to a resolution, probably coming to council, we're thinking August 13th, to help with the timing a bit better, in which we have to get it set, sent up to Dane County, so, look forward to the conversation tomorrow night, we'll do a presentation and, again, have that, that, that discussion. And then the other item that I forgot to include in my administrator's report, which I apologize for, is the Police Department's Community Night Out has been scheduled, that will take place August 14th from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at McKee Farms Park, and I think last year they estimated attendance at that event at about 1,500 people, so it was really well-attended last year, hopefully we get some good weather again this year and have a nice turnout, so we appreciate that, the staff that put that event on, so sorry for missing that earlier.
No, it's fine. Okay. Thank you, Chad. Our next common council meeting will be August 13, 2024, so I need a motion...
Move for adjournment.
Oh, my God.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carried, we are adjourning at 9:09, and thank you, with a smokes at all of us.